Twenty to order. Um. Ms. Chain, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Osberger, Berthelot.
Yeah.
Bruder.
Oh, Sam's frozen, but he's definitely here.
I see him. Frettoni.
Yeah.
Freudman.
Yeah.
Katchenberger.
There.
Moran.
Here.
Sharon.
Here.
Shaken.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item is approval of the minutes of August tenth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Mr. Katchenberger. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Second by Mr. Sharon. Comments, corrections? Uh, um, is there anybody who wishes to abstain? Is there any? Are there any no votes? All right, the most, the minutes have been approved unanimously. Uh, is there anybody from the public here to address the council, Mr. Carrington?
No, no one contacted my office or sent any emails.
Okay. Uh, members of the public are welcome to make comments. Uh, they have to follow the new rules for these kinds of of meetings. Um, their people, members of the public are always welcome to email us, to write, uh, and to, um, they comment directly during the course of our meeting. I know it's a little harder during using these, uh, virtual meetings, but public comment is always welcomed. Uh, next item on our agenda is a report of the town manager and the COVID nineteen update. Mr. Carrington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sent the, uh, report to all the counselors, so you should have it in your email. From my office, uh, UConn sent me some, uh, stuff to report on, so I'll give that first. Uh, the best place to get correct information is their data dashboard. It's updated daily between four and five P M. It's at reopen dot UConn dot edu backslash COVID dash dashboard. So the dash sign and then the word dash forward. I can share the screen to show that if you wanted me to, Mayor, but that's okay.
Uh, sure, just briefly.
Sure, I'll do that. So this is the, uh, current up to dated, updated as of today, uh, August twenty fourth, so you can see the the positive cases on campus. Uh, they tested five thousand five hundred nine, twenty seven students tested positive for a point four nine percent positive rate. Uh, there's currently twenty three with positive or symptomatic cases, and one student has recovered. Off-campus commuter, there's been four positive cases, and faculty and staff, there's been two out of the over three thousand. And their residential capacity is five thousand on stores, and their isolation bed, they have twenty three in use with a hundred and seventy seven remaining, so that if residents want to see that, that can, they can go to this site every day sometime in the afternoon, it'll be updated. I noticed they did not update it on the weekends, so I think it's just Monday to Friday. A reminder, because they're, they're seeing a lot of social media, current gathering size limits are what is enforced, not the proposed, or not those proposed by Mansfield and Wyndham. Uh, they have a COVID hotline. If you have questions, you can call eight six zero four eight six C O B I or two six eight four. Or if you prefer to email, you can email questions to covidquestions@UConn.edu. Uh, most of the new cases were a result of students that were put into isolation due to contact with a positive student. Then they became positive. Uh, these weren't random positives. An open letter to the town of Mansfield was sent out by the UConn president, Tom Castelaus, and Provost and Executive Vice President for Academic Affairs, Carl Lizway on the thought exchange. Uh, testing will continue throughout the semester. For surveillance, groups tested will be chosen based on the recommendations of Shaw Student Health and Wellness, and through the wastewater data. As of now, UConn has no updates on wastewater testing, but it'll ramp up as they move into more day-to-day operations. They also wanted to remind people that the UConn police do not oversee the town neighborhoods and roads. Some social media posts are wrong about the UConn police. Uh, residents don't seem to understand what the relationship is and what actual police officers by law are allowed to do. So some things that people are requesting, why aren't police doing something about it? Well, nobody's breaking the law, so that's, or they're on campus and they can't go off campus, so it would be through our state police. Uh, from the Mansfield Board of Education, plans continue to reopen schools on a hybrid model beginning September third, twenty twenty. Parents have been offered the opportunity to opt into five days of remote learning. Teachers have already been in schools preparing for the opening. Use of the hybrid model will be reassessed after one month to determine whether schools could safely open five days a week for all students. The Downtown Partnership is continuing Mask Up Mansfield, a public awareness campaign to encourage all residents and visitors to wear a mask, maintain a distance of six feet from others, and wash hands. Frequently, campaign includes signs, decals, and social media posts, including a Facebook ad campaign, which has reached over five thousand five hundred individuals and has over forty six thousand impressions to date. Uh, continuing support of all Mansfield businesses by communicating guidance from the state for phase reopening, funding and business development opportunities, and federal news and updates through email blasts, and using their website. Please visit mansfieldmvp.org backslash reopen. They're preparing for the twenty twenty Celebrate Mansfield Festival, which will be a month-long celebration all over town with safe and socially distanced activities to promote the people, organizations, and businesses that make Mansfield special. The festival kicks off September one. Visit downtownstoresfestival.org for more information. From Fire and Emergency Services, the department, uh, received a one thousand five hundred dollar grant from the Connecticut, from Connecticut Water. The grant program is for fire departments to support water supplies and related equipment. Funds from the grant will be used to purchase gated relief valves for two of our fire trucks. The valves provide protection to the fire truck, truck pumps from damage due to sudden surges in the water flow. Human Resources, interview scheduled for Thursday, August twenty seventh, for candidates for the assessor position. They're coordinating the department head interviews for the town manager finalists, and they're planning for the reopening of Town Hall and employee concerns regarding balancing work slash school challenges. Parks and Recreation, the fall program brochure has been distributed. Fall programs include a combination of traditional and virtual programs. Staff will be adapting as needed to meet state and local health rules and interests of community. The community center will be accepting non-members for facility usage beginning August thirty first by reservation only. The town's newest open space preserve, Simpson Wood Preserve, is now available for public use of the trails. Trails are clearly marked, and a downloadable version will soon be available through Parks and Recreation website. A convenient parking area is available at the trailhead and located on Route eighty nine, Orneville Road, across the street from Mount Hope Park. Planning Development, Mansfield Farms to Families Program Grant. The Connecticut Department of Agriculture awarded the Human Services Department and Taste of Mansfield twenty four thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars to pilot the Mansfield Farms to Families Program to increase access to low-income households to local food by developing connections with local farms. The pilot program will include food boxes and community-supported agricultural shares. Fundraising tools will be developed to sustain the program over the long term. Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, COVID nineteen, filing the council's August tenth, uh, public hearing. The Department of Planning and Development submitted a grant application for five hundred thousand dollars in C D B G dash C V funds to assist low and moderate income residents impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic with childcare, rent, and food. A copy of the application, including a more detailed product description, is included in the communications portion of this packet. Upcoming public hearing on amendments to the zoning regulations. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September eighth, on proposed changes to the zoning regulations related to multifamily residential and group dwelling uses. Density bonuses for affordable housing and changes to various zoning districts associated with multifamily and small lot, single-family housing. A copy of the proposed changes is included in the communications portion of this packet. Public works since the last report, the department has been addressing the significant storm damage from the tropical storm. They removed six additional trees and took a hundred and fifteen loads of brush to the transfer station. Paving has begun on Mansfield Avenue and Mansfield City Road and is scheduled for completion this week. Uh, we've received notification that we're a finalist for the twenty twenty Lot Sip Solicitation for Reconstruction of Maple Road, and the downtown pedestrian loop has advanced with Connecticut DOT for project initiation. Resurfacing of Hillendale Road from Separatist to Thompson Road is taking place this week with reclaiming, and the paving is scheduled for next week. Town Clerk's Office, uh, November third election update. Preparations for the election are well underway. The Town Clerk's absentee ballot program web page is updated regularly. A link to this page is available on the town's homepage. Information regarding how to apply and vote by absentee has been pushed out via Facebook and the town's email distribution system. A mail piece with important Mansfield-specific absentee voting information is in the works. The Secretary of State's office will be mailing applications to all registered voters, but will not be using a mailhouse to distribute ballots as they did with the August primary. All ballots will be issued locally by the town clerks. Additional staffing from the Register's office has been arranged to assist the town clerk's office with processing the thousands of absentee applications and ballots expected in the months of September and October. And from the August eleventh, twenty twenty Presidential Preference Primary, uh, there was nine, one thousand nine hundred and ten ballots issued. Uh, ballots that were returned by the eleventh were one thousand four hundred thirty-two, and ballots rejected for late return were a hundred and thirty-nine. Upcoming events, there's a COVID testing event. The Generations Family Healthcare or Health Center Incorporated will be offering free COVID nineteen testing at a pop-up site outside the Mansfield Senior Center on September eighth from nine A M. to twelve P M. More information will be shared as it becomes available. And the Stores Farmers Market is open every Saturday from three to six on the front lawn of the Mansfield Town Hall. And just a reminder that, uh, tomorrow we have a meeting, uh, as Executive Personnel Committee at six thirty. That's all I have, Mayor.
But questions for the town manager? There was a lot of information in that report.
Yes.
Um. Okay, uh, there's one thing, John, I wanted to add the, the letter that we sent to businesses. It has been delivered. Uh, I've, uh, I've heard at least one positive response to it, so that was, that was good news. Um. And congratulations on getting us on the Maple Road, getting the Maple Road work on as a finalist. Uh, what are our chances of getting that grant, do you think?
Don't even want to hazard a guess. That we made the list is a good thing, but who knows, you know, what will happen?
Well, I'm sorry that, uh, Mr. Osberger isn't here, because that's been one of his real, uh, real concerns. So, uh, if somebody would relay to him this news, it would be a good thing. Uh, no other questions? Okay, I would strongly recommend that people check out the, uh, the Thought Exchange Report. The data that that is included is very interesting, including some recommendations, which we'll have to be looking at as we go down the road. Um, next item is reports and comments of council members, and I will begin by saying that, uh, our press conference on Friday was extremely successful, uh, in terms of the amount of coverage. Uh, as we went into that, that press conference, I had two speeches prepared. Uh, one of them was thanking the governor for responding to our request to limit gatherings, uh, both indoors and outdoors. And since that request was not granted, uh, the next speech was asking him to do so. So, uh, we did get a lot of coverage, and we don't know what the consequence will be. Um, I have, uh, emailed my two contacts at the E C D and in the governor's office, saying this was not the message that we wanted to send. We really wanted to take the opportunity to thank him for this. Um, but, uh, so far I have not had a response. Um, the other thing I want to say in, in my report is that this week is the hundredth anniversary of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment, which doubled the size of the American electorate, one of the most important, significant, most significant expansions in civil rights and civil liberties that the United States has undertaken, uh, or that other countries have undertaken by admitting women to the voting rolls. Uh, very significant expansions happened, but also very significant changes began to take place. Um, today, women take their voting rights very seriously. The, uh, higher percentage of women tend to be registered to vote, and of those registered, a higher percentage vote. So, um, over the next several years, I'm hoping that, uh, our elected officials, uh, elected bodies will continue to show expansion of women's participation. Um, there's no reason any longer for there to be such a heavily male-dominated governing system. Um, we, we are here, we can vote, we do vote, and it's time to get, to get us on board. I will say that Mansfield has a really fine history of producing really good women leaders. Um, and, uh, I'm proud to be, uh, in that list of, of elected women. So that's my report. Other council members? Oh, oh, one other thing. Um, I really need to give thanks to Ben Shaken for his, his stellar work in putting together that press conference. It could not have happened without him, uh, not only his knowledge, but his, um, let's say, his push to make sure that everything happened when it needed to happen. So, thank you, Ben. Um, okay, anybody else? Ben, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, just, I think briefly on the press conference, and thank you, Mayor. You did a great job, um, sort of telling our message to the world, and we, and, and I think hopefully the message is being heard, um, not just in the governor's office, but also from all the residents in town. Um, I'm encouraged, we're here, we're here from Sergeant Timmy later about a different subject, but I'm encouraged at the results of, of their sort of party patrols over, over the last two weekends. Um, I just wanted to reiterate the message that, that you delivered again, and even though we don't have the permission from Governor Lamont that we have requested and that we think makes sense and would provide, um, the most, uh, the most sort of efficient and effective, uh, sort of toolbox for our, for our staff and our police department to use. We, uh, I think we sent the message that we were urging people to comply with gathering size limitations voluntarily, um, without, without such an order, and, and that is something I think that we are going to continue to urge folks to do for the next several weeks. We're approaching, uh, the start of classes, so fourteen days after residential students arrived here, but that doesn't mean that the sort of large immigration into Mansfield is over. You know, we're expecting continued arrivals of faculty and staff, as well as off-campus commuter students into rental housing, and so that same concern that we had, uh, over the last two weeks about, um, what people could be bringing from other parts of the country probably has another two weeks left to go. And so from my perspective, things have gone well, but again, I think the message that, uh, the mayor that you sent at the press conference was a good one. Please, for now, until we get the sort of all clear that there hasn't been any flare-ups or hot spots or whatever in, in town as a result of the reopening of UConn, uh, more otherwise, to, to please voluntarily don't invite people over to your home for large gatherings. If you invite people, stay outside, wear a mask, um, even though that's kind of hard to do while enjoying a cold beverage on a hot day, and, um, and if you can at all possible, you know, limit the folks who are coming over to people who are already within your sort of COVID-safe bubble. So, um, again, my thanks to the mayor for delivering that message so effectively to the press. That seemed to be the theme of most of the news stories that came out, and that's a good thing.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else have comments? Mr. Bruder?
Just want to take the opportunity to, uh, thank the school staff for all the work they're doing. Uh, I know we're gearing up here to return back to a, uh, new learning environment, and I know that, um, the board and, and like I said, the staff have done a lot. Um, my family and I, we feel comfortable with, uh, uh, the plan in place, so.
Thank you. Any other council member have a comment or report? Okay, thank you very much. We have no old business. The new business is the Mansfield Middle School Roof Project Referendum. Mr. Carrington, would you be, open this discussion? Um, the, uh, this discussion will end, will culminate with a vote on a, uh, a referral to referendum, which we, because it's a bond issue, which we will have to read aloud, and Ms. Berthelot has volunteered to read the two and a half pages of legalese when the time comes. So, Mr. Carrington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, uh, a month ago, uh, we, this came up for an eight twenty-four, uh, caring to be, you know, sent to planning and zoning. They've conducted that. And, you know, the next step now is to get the project on referendum. Uh, we have the building committee chair. Uh, most of you know Paul Shapiro, and he can give a, a summary of the project.
Mr. Shapiro.
Thank you, Mayor Moran, um, uh, Mayor Carrington, um, former colleagues and friends. I was here a month ago, um, when we made a short presentation concerning the eight dash twenty-four review to planning and zoning. And I still believe that the most important question to be asked and answered is, why do we have to do this? And in particular, in view of the, uh, of the COVID epidemic and the uncertain future that we face, why do we have to do it now? The answer is this. Roof at Mansfield Middle School is thirty-two years old, dates from the late nineteen eighties. It has been out of warranty for ten years. Every repair, and the repairs increase exponentially, um, each, each year, has been on our nickel. By the way, when you have a roof that has lasted this long, it tells me a couple of things. One, first and foremost, we got our money's worth. Second, the quality of maintenance that has been done, preventive maintenance and repairs, um, has been absolutely extraordinary. So thanks to Mr. Corson, his predecessors, and everybody in the, um, facilities management department, uh, for that. But we're out of time. Now, why now? I continue to ask that question. Two things are favorable. One, the state's, um, the really, uh, borrowing costs, they are favorable. We have relatively little bonded indebtedness. But more importantly, the state's reimbursement for this project is seventy-five point thirty-six percent. Now, I'm going to put a repeat for the audience, um, numbers that are all in your packet. The total project cost, and this will be on the ballot, is two point eight million dollars. However, the amount that we are borrowing, the town's share, and it's on page seventeen of your packet, is eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. The rest, uh, which is nearly two million, uh, two million dollars, one million nine hundred and two thousand, um, will be the state's share. Now, the cost to the average taxpayer in the town of Mansfield, or the taxpayer in the, um, I believe, the median house, uh, me, uh, in man, in terms of appraisal in Mansfield, that's on page twenty-five, and it's eleven dollars per year. And that's only for one year. That's only for the year when there's a small balloon payment. The rest of the time, it will level off, and the cost per year per taxpayer will be, will be, uh, will be smaller. We have discussed the photovoltaic issue, um, at the last meeting, uh, David, uh, Mr. Freudman, uh, had some, had some questions, but to reiterate, the payback period is eight years, and the, and at that point in time, the energy savings of twenty, twenty thousand dollars a year, um, as is currently estimated, will kick in. My ask is very simple. It's not, uh, send it to the voters. Let them decide whether to, um, build this roof as we planned it. Now, before I, before I conclude, I want to point out that when this first was before the council to approve a building committee, there was an assumption that there would be a, um, metal standing seam roof. That's not the roof that's going to be there. The roof that's going to be there, uh, as decided by this committee, by our, by your committee, was a, by a two-minute double ply roof with a hot tar, with hot, um, hot tar between the two levels of rubber. That is saving us a fortune. Why don't we want a metal seam roof, which was originally in the town's presentation? Very simple. Would cost absolutely ridiculous amount of money. It would probably take us up to the one-hundred-year anniversary of the roof in twenty sixteen, in, 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 uh, twenty sixty-nine. We don't really need that. Uh, when this roof, um, approaches the end of its, of its useful life, the town will make a decision about the future of middle school education, what it will look like, where it will take place. We shouldn't be making those kinds of decisions tonight. Again, my request, send this to the voters and let them, and let them, just let them decide. It's a critically important issue, um, to make our, our, uh, our physical plan and our students safe.
Questions for Mr. Shapiro and Mr. Carrington. Mr. Freudman?
Yes, I thank, uh, both the, um, Mayor, both Manager Carrington and former Mayor Shapiro for their, um, presentation. Um, first of all, no, nobody questions, uh, that I know of, who could question the need, need for a roof. We certainly, certainly been up there a long time, and, uh, and now it's having to be patched, you know, every year, and there's no argument there. As Mr. Shapiro properly noted, I had raised some questions about the solar panel. Uh, the roof unmistakably is a got-to-have. The photovoltaic, uh, solar panels was a, uh, was discretionary. Um, I'll speak about that more later, but, um, my question is this. First of all, I had, um, gotten some information from Manager Carrington a little bit earlier today, uh, and I understand that the, as, as the former mayor just explained, the cost came down precipitously, so it seems like the two point eight million dollars for the roof and the solar installation. I just want to point that out, because second from the last paragraph on page thirteen, just says Mansfield Middle School Roof on the third line, and then it go, no, line above that, it's two point eight million. It was, it was explained that this is for the, this is for the entire project. I do find that, I'm not going to question the work of the school building committee and the breakdown of the numbers, uh, that is on page twenty-one. Um, I will say I'm a little surprised, but I'm not questioning it. Sometimes these things, there are little omissions that are easily explained. I did notice that five lines from the bottom on page twenty-one, it says that the, uh, photovoltaic panels are sixty-five thousand dollars. That's the material cost. That doesn't seem like very much for a lot of solar panels, but I'm not getting into that. But then a couple of columns over, for the labor, it has, it has exactly zero. So I don't know, maybe the labor is included in what you're doing for the roof, and that's, I just don't know, but I have to take, um, our, our, you know, the former mayor and the, and, and Manager Carrington's work for it, the two point eight million for the total cost for both roof and installation is, um, I have to accept that. I'm just saying, it just seemed like an anomaly when you have sixty, sixty-five K for the panels, um, material cost, but zero for the installation. But I'm sure there's an easy answer for that.
Mr. Carrington has, has raised his hand. Mr. Freudman, let's get an answer to your question.
Well, I'll continue. I have something else to say, please, but yeah.
Let's get an answer to this question, then I'll come back to you.
In that same area, David, go down farther, and it's the last entry says direct install labor, and go over, and it's eighty-five thousand.
Well, that's, that's why, um, you know, I'm, I'm a council member and not a, not a finance, so, and I don't claim to be a financial expert, and of course, that makes sense, you know, sometimes you don't break it down, but you just kind of total it rather than buy yourself nuts breaking it down and everything. Thank you for that. Now, I'm just curious. I got the point that the, uh, cost of the roof came down precipitously. Am I correct that, going back to the summary of the original estimate that was told, told us on February twenty-fourth, that the panels are still a million dollars? And the roof is now only one point eight million, and that's how we come up with the two point eight? How do we come up to the two point eight? Please give me a breakdown between those two categories.
Same sheet, page twenty-one, David. That's the entire breakdown. So, if you start from the top down, and then there's markups at the bottom, general conditions ten percent overhead and profit fifteen percent, architect engineer fees, environmental fee, contingency, it all adds up. So, the solar panels is two thou- two hundred and forty thousand before we do general conditions, ten percent overhead and profit fifteen percent. So, it's more like three hundred and thirty. The rest is above that is all the roof project.
That's fascinating. Thank you for that. So, it's basically, the roof is the the roof is two and a half million roughly, maybe two point four, you know, I'm not getting into the breakdown below a hundred thousand, two point, and the and the roof is three thirty K, take, give or take, but together, it's so roughly two and a half and a million and three hundred thousand is the breakdown. Is that is that round?
In that ballpark.
Round numbers, is that about it?
Yes, in that ballpark.
Um, that's it. I thank you for thank you for that. No more questions.
Okay. Does anybody else have another question about this? Um, all right, Ms. Bertha Lot, would you, um, read the motion before us, the resolution?
I will.
It starts on page sixteen.
I I have it as page seventeen.
Oh, yes.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Mansfield, August twenty-four, twenty twenty, item eight B. Resolution appropriating two million eight hundred thousand for costs with respect to roof replacement and photovoltaic system installation at Mansfield Middle School, and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes to finance a portion of the appropriation not defrayed from grants. Resolved, A, that the Town of Mansfield appropriate two million eight hundred thousand dollars for costs related to various improvements to the Mansfield Middle School, consisting of, one, design, construction, and implementation of roof replacement and related improvements, and work contemplated to include, A, replacement of thermoplastic polyolefin roofing installed in nineteen eighty-nine with a new modified bituminous roofing membrane, B, insulation of skylights, C, removal and replacement of curbs, D, provision of roof access on the first level of the school, and E, insulation of proper primary and secondary water drainage, F, addressing roof snow load and snow drift issues, and G, provision for the installation of photovoltaic systems, and, two, design acquisition and installation of a new approximately one hundred and twenty-two kilowatt DC total system size insulation of new photovoltaic pa- oops, excuse me. Total system size photovoltaic photovoltaic system to be installed on the school roof, contemplated to include, A, the installation of new photovoltaic panels, associated wiring, conduit disconnects, circuit breakers and meters, and B, roof structure reinforcement as required. The appropriation may be spent for design, construction, demolition, acquisition, and installation costs, preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications, equipment and materials, architectural engineering consultant and other professional fees, including legal fees, administrative costs, including costs related to the application for and exception and acceptance of grants, the payment of net temporary interest and other financing costs and other expenses related to the project or their financing. The Mansfield Middle School Roof Building Committee shall determine the scope and particulars of the projects and may reduce or modify the scope of the projects, and the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced or modified projects. The town anticipates receiving grants from the state of Connecticut in the estimated amount of approximately one million nine hundred and two thousand two dollars to reimburse in part the eligible costs of the project and defray in part the appropriation for an estimated net cost to the town approximately eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. B, that the town issue its bond or notes in an amount not to exceed two million eight hundred thousand dollars to finance the appropriation for the projects. The amount of bonds or notes authorized shall be reduced by the amount of grants received by the town for the projects to the extent that such grants are not separately appropriated to pay additional project costs. The bonds or notes shall be issued pursuant to section seven dash three sixty-nine and ten dash two eighty-nine of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty-eight as amended, and any other enabling acts. The bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. C, that the town issue and renew temporary notes from time to time in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds from the sale of the bonds or notes or the receipt of grants for the projects. The amount of the notes outstanding at any time shall not exceed two million eight hundred thousand dollars. The notes shall be issued pursuant to section seven dash three seventy-eight of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty-eight as amended. The notes shall be general obligations of the town and shall be secured by the irrevocable pledge of the full faith and credit of the town. The town shall comply with the provisions of section seven dash three seventy-eight A of the General Statute for respect to any notes that do not mature within the time permitted by said section seven dash three seven eight. D, the town manager, the director of finance, and the treasurer, or any two of them, shall sign any bonds, notes, or temporary notes by their manual or facsimile signatures. The law firm of Day Pitney is designated as bond counsel to approve the legality of the bonds, notes, or temporary notes. The town manager, the director of finance, and the treasurer, or any two of them, are authorized to determine the amount, date, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other any other details of the bonds, notes, or temporary notes to designate one or more banks or trust companies to be certifying bank, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent for the bonds, notes, or temporary notes to provide for the keeping of a record of the bonds, notes, or temporary note, to designate a municipal advisor to the town in connection with the sale of the bonds, notes, or temporary notes, to sell the bonds, notes, or temporary notes at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds, notes, or temporary notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds, notes, or temporary notes. E, that the town hereby declares its official intent under federal income tax regulation section one dot one fifty dash two that project costs may be paid from temporary advances of available funds, and that the town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances from the proceeds of borrowings in an aggregate principal amount not in excess of the amount of borrowing authorized above for the projects. The town manager, the director of finance, and the treasurer, or any two of them, are authorized to amend such declaration of official intent as they deem necessary or advisable, and to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds, notes, or temporary notes authorized by this resolution, if issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. F, that the town manager, the director of finance, and the treasurer, or any two of them, are authorized to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds, notes, or temporary notes authorized by this resolution to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds, notes, or temporary notes. G, that the Mansfield Middle School Roof Building Committee is authorized to act as a school building committee for and to carry out the projects, and is vested with the following powers and duties. One, to recommend the approval of design and construction expenditures for the projects pursuant to project contracts entered into by the town in accordance with its procurement regulations, including without limitation the cost of preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project, and, two, to exercise such other powers as are necessary or appropriate to complete the projects. Necessary expenses of the committee shall be included in the cost of the project. H, that the Board of Education is authorized to apply to the Commissioner of Education for and to accept or reject state grants for the projects. The Board of Education is authorized to file notices and applications with the State Board of Education for the projects, to execute grant agreements for the projects, and to file such documents as may be required by the State Board of Education, to obtain grants for the cost of financing the projects, and to take any other actions necessary to obtain such grants or to implement such grant agreements. And I, that the town manager, the director of finance, the treasurer, the Board of Education, the Mansfield School Building Committee, and other proper officers and officials of the town are authorized to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to complete the projects and to issue bonds or notes and temporary notes and obtain grants to finance and aforesaid appropriation.
Um, let me stop you there. John, do we need to vote on that or separately from the rest, from what comes next?
I don't believe so, but I don't know.
Do you want me to continue then?
Sarah Ann, do you know the answer to that question?
I can't quote any legalese, but it seems to me if you pass it together or passes separately, it's all the same, as long as you pass it.
Okay. Um, one last person, Sherry, how about you?
Um, yes, I believe Sarah Ann's correct. I think it's up to you if you want to pass it together or separately.
Okay. Take a deep breath, Terry, you're on.
Resolution establishing a referendum for the twenty twenty Mansfield Middle School Roof Replacement Photovoltaic Installation Project Appropriation and Borrowing Authorization. Resolved, A, that pursuant to sections four oh six and four oh seven of the Town Charter, the resolution adopted by the council under item?
Eight B.
Eight B. Of this meeting appropriating two million eight hundred thousand dollars for costs with respect to the twenty twenty Mansfield Middle School Roof Replacement Photovoltaic Installation Project, and authorizing the issue of bonds, notes, and temporary notes to finance the appropriation, shall be submitted to the voters at referendum to be held on Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty, in conjunction with the election to be held on that date in the manner provided by said charter and the Connecticut General Statutes, revision of nineteen fifty-eight as amended, including the procedures set out in section nine dash three six nine D B two of said statutes, in accordance with ordinance regarding the rights of voters who are not electors to vote at referenda held in conjunction with an election, adopted by the Mansfield Town Council on August twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety-seven. B, that the aforesaid resolution shall be placed upon the ballots under the following heading. Shall the Town of Mansfield appropriate appropriate two million eight hundred thousand dollars for costs with respect to roof replacement and photovoltaic system installation at Mansfield Middle School, and authorize the issue of bonds and notes to finance the portion of the appropriation not defrayed from grants. Voters approving the resolution will vote yes, and those opposing said resolution shall vote no. C, that the town clerk shall publish notice of such referendum vote as part of a notice of the election to be held on November third, twenty twenty. Absentee ballots will be available from the town clerk's office. D, that in their discretion, the town clerk is authorized to prepare a concise explanatory text regarding the resolution, and the town manager is authorized to prepare additional neutral explanatory materials regarding the resolution, such text and neutral explanatory material to be subject to the approval of the town attorney, and to be prepared and distributed in accordance with section nine dash three six nine B of the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty-eight as amended.
Thank you. Uh, one correction, it is item eight A rather than eight B. I misspoke. Do we have a second? Mr. Shaken seconds. All right, so these two resolutions, the first one is the appropriation of the money authorizing us to spend it, and the second one authorizes the referendum. So, is there further discussion of this item on our agenda? Mr. Freudman.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, and I'll try to be brief. I will support this motion. I always said I'll support the roof. But I have to express, my chagrin, I thought about putting this in some kind of a motion to get it on the record, but, um, I I don't think I'll do that, but I still want to mention a few things. I appreciate that the project cost has dropped from the original estimate of four million dollars to two point eight. Remember, originally, it was going to be three million for the roof and one million for the solar. Now, it seems that the roof, which, as former Mayor Shapiro explained, the cost came down a large amount because of, um, the material, not using the metal seam roof. It really brought it down from three million to two and a half million, which is significant. Um, you know, that's, I think, one-sixth, say seventeen percent decrease. That's welcome. That is a significant drop. I just find it a little weird that the solar part, which was estimated at one million dollars, now drops to a third. Um, Manager Shapiro, uh, Manager Carrington said that that's, um, about three hundred and thirty thousand, I'm just rounding it off a little bit. You know, it's close, three thirty, that is a third of a million dollars. So, that's dropped by sixty-seven percent of the original estimate. I can't prove anything. Somehow, that just seems like the sole, you know, the roof I get, you know, you're dropping from a very expensive metal seam roof to some other, you know, more traditional material. I can I can definitely understand the seventeen percent decrease. I I have a little hard time explaining how the cost of solar mysteriously dropped. You know, I kind of wonder if somehow some of the, you know, savings in the roof, I don't know. I just can't explain it. It just seems like a very, it just seems incongruous to me, uh, because you didn't change the material of the solar panel or the type of controller, uh, how can you be off by that much? That part bothers me, um, but I will support it. The other thing that that bothers me is back on February twenty-fourth, I had, you recall that I and my my fellow Republicans on the council have asked, you know, said, I had mentioned, look, the roof is an absolute necessity. The roof is going to add cost before the million dollars. Um, that's not a must-have, that's discretionary. Um, and and I asked at the time if there would be separate ballot questions, one for people to vote on the roof and one to vote on the, um, solar installation. And I was told, and I remember specifically, it was the the honorable Deputy Mayor Shaken, who pretty much looked me in the eye and said there would be separate ballot questions. I take everybody here as honorable people and take their word, but that was not followed. And I'll I'll just leave it at that. And also, the instructions apparently given by management to the attorneys to put together this this document, uh, it was not asked of them to separate the question. I just kind of have a little bit of resentment. I just kind of have a little bit of resentment for feeling that the cost of discretionary, the additional cost of solar panels, which is a discretionary item, is basically being combined, you know, rammed down the throat, so to speak, if I may, um, with a very necessary project that I'm sure everybody would support, which is, which is the roof. Um, so those, those are my two main concerns. A very minor point, just a minor point, and I think I heard Mayor Moran correct it, is I had noticed that there were two Item 8Bs when starting on page 17 and another item starting on page 19. Uh, and I was going to just say that creates the, uh, ambiguity if you're referring to paragraph 8 capital B sub-paragraph A, there's one on page 17 and then another one on page 19. But if I heard correctly, Mayor Moran, you said that the one on page 17 should have been eight, other A. If, if that's, so those are, those are the three things. Uh, if my understanding correct, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then the third one is a moot point. Um, that, that ambiguity is being corrected, but I, I am a little heaved about the first two things, uh, but I will support the main motion. Thank you all.
Thank you. Just as a matter of, as a member of the building committee, there were a number of things that were in the initial proposal that were changed based on the recommendations of our various consultants and architects. Uh, one of them was to move away from the standing seam roof, another one, uh, was to move away from the more innovative, uh, mechanism for attaching the panels to the roof, which would have been, uh, part of the standing seam roof, and now we are in a, a more traditional and probably significantly less expensive method of, of putting the panels on the roof. So, uh, thanks to our consultants and our architects, uh, who are very concerned about uh, being reasonable about cost as well as, um, making sure that we got the best value for our money, um, you, you do see these really significant reductions. Okay, any further questions, Mr. Carrington?
I just want to point out, every item should be Item 8A, not just the, just not the one on page 19, well, two on page 19 and one on page 17. That's my fault. I moved this up. Uh, I was requested to move it up, and I failed to catch that.
So it's just a technical issue, it's not, doesn't have any significance, it's just a typographical correction. Um, any further questions? Any, Mr. Freudman, let's see if anybody else on the council wishes to comment on this. Mr. Shaken?
Um, yeah, I have a, I just have a question, I, I, and then a statement, I think, is, is the change in the attach...
Sorry, you're coming in.
Hardware you just described, Mayor, is that, does that represent the totality of the reduction of the photovoltaics reduced? I just would answer to the question Mr. Freudman's asked a few times about what, why the cost hanging out so much for the solar piece of the project.
The initial estimate was a staff estimate. We don't, I don't think we've ever staff put in a solar panel, so we used a flat, uh, square footage, took the square footage of the entire middle school, came out with roughly a million dollars. Uh, when we got the architect engineer firm, so Petroselli, they realized you can't put solar panels everywhere, they maximized it, they got the cost down to where it's 240. And it may, there could be issues that, you know, it could go up, could have gone up to a million if they put solar panels where they wouldn't have been as effective. So this is the most effective use of the, the roof for solar capability is at this price. And that, the initial estimate was from staff, not from a contractor.
Thanks, that's helpful. So, just two things. First, um, I don't recall the meeting that Mr. Freudman is referring to when I, um, and I don't recall making a promise that the bond referendum question would be separated into, into two different questions for voters. I might have to go back and look at the tape, and I, I guess I apologize if I made a promise that did not come to fruition, but I don't recall doing that. I recall a conversation about how this would come back up on our agenda and there would be ample opportunity to debate, um, and, and would ultimately be up to the voters. I, I will also say, just as an individual counselor, I, I, in an individual person in town, I feel very strongly that when a municipality or any government at this sta, you know, at this stage of the game undertakes in a major construction project where a roof is involved, we have an obligation to install, um, our own power generation as a way to reduce the town's reliance on fossil fuels. Um, it, it's a great initiative, and frankly, when I joined the council five years ago, we were way behind. It had been something that had been cut out of projects for many years due to cost considerations, and, uh, it's something that I'm very grateful to the recent building committees, both, um, this building committee, the elementary school building committee, and the high school, all of which have elected to include this in their construction projects. I think it's a, a great long-term investment from a financial perspective for the town, and I think it also, um, is a great long-term investment in, from a, from an environmental perspective. I think it's something frankly, all new construction, residential, corporate, whatever, should have, um, and, and the rules and regulations governing that construction should, should start mandating it. So I'm glad we're doing it here. I think it's absolutely worth the investment, and, um, I'm very grateful that the state is picking up a big, you know, big portion of the cost of, of their installation as well, just like they are on the high school, and they will be on the elementary school. So I hope everyone will support it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the State Department of School Construction has been very supportive of this project, um, as a single project with, uh, the roof and the photovoltaics, although there are, will be two separate, uh, funding sources, so that, in fact, uh, it is a single project with two grant applications. Um, but that's, that's a technical thing. We have apparently been assured that there will be funding for it. Um, any further questions? Ms. Chain, would you call the roll on this, please?
Yes, Bruthelot.
Yes.
Bruder.
Yes.
Bertoni.
Yes.
Freudman.
Yes.
Hutchenberger.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Shaken.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is adopted unanimously, uh, and it will be on the ballot in November. So thank you very much.
Mayor Moran, um, I just want to stress my thanks to this overwhelming bipartisan support for, for this project, and, uh, I think that, as Mr. Shaken said, future generations will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work and for your continuing responsibility. But once this is adopted, you come back and you actually supervise the construction, so.
I can't get out. Yep, I'm ready for it.
You can't get out that easy. All right, uh, the next item on our agenda is the State Police response to the Wellington incident. Mr., Mr. Carrington.
I just wanted to state that found out Channel 191 is not working. It's a spectrum issue. We are broadcasting through live stream. So if you, if people are getting texts or phone calls that 191 is down, that is true, nothing in our control, but live stream is available.
Okay, um, Mr. Carrington, where do we go? Yes, please.
So as, uh, I was asked back in, uh, June about, uh, the response to the, uh, the Wellington incident that happened, so, uh, council asked that Connecticut State Police come forward to give their response. So tonight we're joined by Lieutenant Robert Palmer, who is Sergeant Timmy's, uh, next superior chain of command. So they're, they're here to, uh, give a little summary and then answer any questions. I'll turn it over to, uh, to Lieutenant.
Welcome, Lieutenant Palmer.
Good evening, I just want to make sure I can be heard.
Yes.
Excellent. Um, uh, my, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you all on the Wellington incident. Uh, just to give you some, uh, background, before we start the conversation, there are certain aspects of this at this point in time, now that he is in custody and in the, in the, um, Department of Corrections system, the state's attorney is in charge of, uh, the release of information relative to that case. So some details are going to be, um, off limits for me in terms of investigative steps, um, some of the things relative to, um, uh, the, the, the victims and the, um, the subject in question. So I'm hoping that my, the, the conversation can revolve around any concerns that the town has relative to the communication that went on. I think we can speak to that, but anything relative to the case is, is going to be something I cannot, uh, I can't broach as a subject for, for discussion in an open forum.
Um, I think our concern was the communication.
Okay. So just to give you some background, uh, on the day in question, there were three incidents occurring simultaneously in the troop area. One of them was somewhat the more, uh, uh, common call for us, uh, with regard to day-to-day operations. The second one involved a pursuit that, uh, East Long Meadow engaged a vehicle in, up in Massachusetts, and it wound up finding its way down into Connecticut and into the town of Summers. So I'm sure some of you may be aware of that. Um, I was not working that day, but given the, the nature of everything that was going on, I, I came in to manage the Summers incident. So I was up in the town of Summers for a period of time, and I didn't make my way back to the barracks until probably just prior to the, uh, press conference that was held in the town of Wellington. So with regard to some of the decisions that were made at the scene between when the call came in at 9:00 AM and when I arrived sometime between 11:00 and 11:30 and got to the Town Hall of Wellington, uh, those are things that, uh, I, I can't speak to directly as I was not there. Major Crime Unit and the District Commander were at the scene, uh, in Wellington along with my executive officer, and, and, uh, they were managing that scene. So upon my arrival there, uh, when I got there, the, uh, Public Information Office, our Media Relations Unit, was already at the Town Hall. I had spoken with the first-elect woman for the town of Wellington prior to my arrival there. So I met everyone at the Town Hall, uh, he gave a brief press conference there, and then I went to the scene after that. So I did not get to that scene till, uh, multiple hours after the incident occurred. So the press conference information that was put out at that moment was public information, uh, to its entire extent. So a, any, uh, information provided by PIO in that context could have been re-released by anybody in that, in, in the area at that time. Uh, and then, uh, the social media posts were up as well. And one of the, the reasons that we believed we had made, uh, uh, good contact with the surrounding areas is because at the time, we were fielding multiple calls from various locations throughout North Central Connecticut regarding the motorcycle in question. So, uh, Sergeant Timmy and I had had, uh, and, and, uh, Sarge, you can, you can correct me if I'm, if I don't recall correctly, we had at least two conversations during the course of that day?
Correct.
Okay. And in both cases, we were talking, in both cases, we were discussing what information, um, that, that we believed had been put out, or we knew had been put out, and what we thought, uh, folks might need in addition to what had already gone out. Now, again, our perspective was from the time that I got to the scene and when Sergeant Timmy became aware. Uh, actually, Sarge, I want to turn it over to you, just so you can give your perspective in terms of what happened in that run-up to our conversation, so everyone can understand how things were layered in.
Okay, um, that was on that morning, uh, that Friday morning, and, uh, like the lieutenant said, it was, um, extraordinarily crazy day, um, more than one call, and it was not the normal calls of patrol per se. So it was a crazy morning, um, however, I do, uh, specifically remember, um, our, our link with the information that was coming out of Wellington, um, the connection, I don't want to call it connection, but a connection to, uh, the suspect, identifying a suspect was not, um, gathered until later that afternoon, um, mid-afternoon, actually, which, uh, may not sound like much, but, but that type of a crime and that type of a scene is exemplary to have a suspect within certain hours of an incident when the suspect is not there. So, um, with that being said, without having suspect information, um, the information coming out of Wellington was pretty much just only law enforcement, because law enforcement sensitive at that time, to where we still didn't even have, uh, any information, you know, we were trying to identify the motorcycle, and that was the first thing that we had, um, with witnesses on scene of the suspect fleeing with that portion of it. So, um, until we found that was the point that we, um, still couldn't identify or release information. Um, at that point, I contacted the, uh, John Carrington, Town Manager, and just giving him some, providing him some information just to say, hey, we're working a scene in Wellington, I'll keep you advised with, uh, any specifics that I can. And I really didn't at this ti, at that time, I knew nothing more than, it was a very fluid and, um, serious scene in Wellington. Um, later that afternoon, when I had, uh, contacted Lieutenant Palmer, is right after the suspect, um, was identified to law enforcement, not to the public, um, which I still at that point could not release, um, to John Carrington and or the public. Um, I was working with UConn, um, with Major Crime, and with Lieutenant Palmer to, uh, extract as much information we could, um, regarding the suspect to, you know, possibly catch and, and figure out where he was at the time. So that's kind of information that is not released to the public, it's not public information at that time, and not until the state's attorney and the Public Information Office labels it as public information, can we release any of that. But I did keep close conversation with Lieutenant Palmer and John Carrington during that fluid moment, and, uh, that's how that kind of developed into where we were at that day, that afternoon.
Okay, just from the perspective of what was going on at the scene, when I arrived there, the, the state's attorney from GA 19 in Rockville was on the scene, along with, uh, one of his investigators and another attorney from that office. Uh, there were multiple entities out there in addition to them. The call did not come in originally, or the, the call came in originally as something other than what it turned out to be, and I, I, I would imagine that doesn't surprise anyone. So there was a period of time where they weren't even quite sure what they had until they started pulling that information together. Uh, Sergeant Timmy's mentioned that, you know, the information relative to a suspect, um, it's extremely difficult, Major Crime has to be very careful with regard to what information they put out, because even though they thought the individual in question may have been involved, they had no idea to what degree, um, that individual was involved directly, or there were possibilities that, uh, made him someone who might not even be in the area. So there was a, a broad spectrum of possibilities still at that time, uh, leading up to the, uh, press conference, in which there was no certainty as to who it was and, and what role that individual played. So there was a tremendous amount of ambiguity in the early hours of that incident that resulted in, in us not knowing who the individual was and, and where that person could or could not be.
Um, are you ready for questions from?
Yeah, I think so.
Ms. Bruthelot?
First off, I want to thank, uh, Lieutenant Palmer and Sergeant Timmy, uh, for joining us this evening, and for the state police in general, uh, for solving this crime so quickly. My concern, uh, is, um, not so much about what went right in terms, more of a postmortem in, in the sense of what could have done, happened that was better. And I appreciate that there was no way that you could let the public know specifics as to who you thought committed the crime, but I, I, my sense from the community was a great deal of frustration in that a, a very serious crime had been committed, uh, and, and a killer, regardless of who that killer was, was on the run, uh, and folks were not told to shelter in place or, um, given enough information, uh, to bring their children inside, for instance. So I'm wondering, uh, based on your professional expertise, what could have been done differently such that folks could have been better informed, uh, given the circumstances? such that folks could have been better informed, given the circumstances at hand?
That's a, it's a very difficult question for me to ask because I was not at the scene in those early hours of the, so you know, for me to sit at this point in time and speak to what might have been done to satisfy that, that need that people had in that moment. So I'll say this, the, at the scene at that time, again, as I said earlier, they, we believed we had information out there sufficient to provide people an understanding of what was going on. In hindsight, based on the feedback we got from not just you folks in the town of Mansfield, but also from Wellington and Ashford, we clearly understand at this point that we did not meet that need. So, you know, to the degree that we believe we had sufficient information out there in that moment, that was clearly not the case based on the feedback coming from folks in the surrounding communities. So that is something that we have to recalibrate on as we go forward, what would be the best course of action in that incident or future incidents in this case to try to alleviate that concern. So, you know, what could, what should have been done is I can't speak to. No one at that scene believed that they hadn't provided sufficient information. I think we might be, we might be a little bit enamored with the social media piece and our PIO that in such a way that we thought that once we put that out there, it would go throughout the entire world and everyone would know what was going on. And I don't know that, that's clearly not the case. Enough people did not get the word based on the feedback we're getting from the surrounding communities.
Mr. Shaken?
Thanks. And Lieutenant, I think that's a, that's sort of a, kind of a key piece of information. I think that when we originally talked about this, we were getting questions, although I will say none as serious, I think, or as fervent in any regard as, you know, the town of Wellington experienced. But as, as you know, we have a reverse 911 system in town, notify system, and I get phone calls and text messages when there's going to be traffic outside of the drive-in or when a tree is down across the road, you know, relatively, things I would not consider to be public emergencies, right? So helpful information, useful, but not, it's not something that the town has, you know, historically here at least, reserved for true public emergencies. We don't have a lot of those. And so I think the sort of question, the central question was obviously what ended up transpiring following the initial hours on that scene where someone close by was held hostage for a period of time and then the suspect escaped ultimately halfway across the country. I think people here started to ask, well, wait, he was someone who lived in this town and very well could have traveled back here and we didn't know that this was happening or that someone with this connection, you know, had, we need to be on the lookout for someone in particular or someone who's met a description of someone or a particular vehicle and that, and then I think caused a fair bit of distress for folks. So I'm curious if, whether it's you or Sergeant Timmy, what are your sort of protocols for asking the town's emergency management department to utilize our reverse 911 system to discuss a, you know, an active public safety emergency?
You know what, I'm going to, I'm going to start with Sergeant Timmy because he has the most consistent contact with the town sergeant. Have we used that system in the past for critical incidents in the town, to your knowledge?
Since I've been in town, no, I don't think we've had any critical incidents, knock on wood, in the town of Mansfield. I do get a lot of the, a lot of information regarding, especially with the storms, the weather that we have been experiencing all over, every town has, regarding the trees and especially during the winter months when it becomes a, you know, the snowstorm type events. We did recently use it during the high school graduations that were down at the Mansfield Drive-In and also communicate to the residents because there was going to be an influx of traffic in that area, particularly during the nights. We did it the day before leading up to the graduations, but that's the last and only time that we've really used the reverse call system in town.
Okay, so and I'll speak to the question about when to use those systems and I think, sir, you hit on it. We don't use them very frequently from the standpoint of communicating with the towns. So in the mental checklist of what was happening at the scene that day, I don't think that was something in people's minds because we don't have incidents of this nature frequently. So the focus at the scene was attempting to discern what had occurred and who might be involved. And the detectives from all over the eastern district that were there, I don't think in their mind at the outset, that piece was something that they were thinking of as an asset available to them. Does that make sense in the context of the town?
Yeah, I think it does and I know that that's been a hot topic in the town of Wellington who also has one of those systems. So I think I would encourage, you know, if you haven't already, that should we ever have something, God forbid, as serious as this, but even things that are less serious where there's information that, you know, the public should have, for better or for worse, as, as you deal with occasional, you know, vehicle theft here, this is a place where some people don't feel like they need to lock their doors and lock their cars at night. And so when, and generally they're correct, and so when in the very rare instance where that's not the case, people obviously, ununderstandably, get very worried, right? So given, I think especially that this incident was sort of active, if you will say, to use that word, for a pretty extended period of time, like 24 hours or so or just about, with the suspect being, remaining in Wellington and sort of until the early morning hours of the next day, I think obviously you didn't know that until so much later, but I think people definitely felt like some communication would, would have been good outside of social media because social media has a, has a sort of way to balloon out of control.
Agreed.
I have another, sorry, go ahead.
Agreed. We agree with you and that's something that's, that's, we have collectively taken close account of with regard to future incidences. What communication protocols in terms of layering that information out to the world are we going to follow in the future and evaluating what the towns have available to them is going to be part, is part of that as well? You said yet another question, sir?
Yeah, thank you, that's good to know. So switching gears a tiny bit here, you may not be able to talk too much about this, but it's been reported in the press and there's been sort of rumors swirling that the suspect was someone who was known to law enforcement before this incident, that there had been, you know, issues with in the past. And, and some of that was sort of noted in his arrest warrant and anyway, from, from your perspective, whether, were there on-campus incidents, how, how involved was, your agency was the UConn Police Department, was UConn Mental Health Services when this individual was a student, et cetera? Were there warning signs, you know, when the name came across your, your plate, was it someone who you said, oh, this person, okay, uh-oh? And if there were, if all, the answer to that is yes. And your, from your perspective, you know, was everything done that could have been done to prevent an incident like this and, or were there pieces of this that were missed?
Okay, so we've partially strayed into the area that we discussed at the outset with regard to information that may not seem relative to the, to the case at hand, but will definitely be something the state's attorney is probably not going to have me discussing outside of the case right now. I will say this though, that name was not so familiar to us that any of us recognized it. We had to do a search of our systems to see what information was in there and we located some contacts with that individual, but as to the rest of it, I couldn't possibly speak to UConn's efforts in any way, shape or form, we're just not aware of what they would do. And the rest of that is really something that falls under the purview of the state's attorney and the case in general right now. So, you know, I hope that's enough, but that's one of those questions that kind of strays into the fact pattern that may be in question for jury selection and whatnot.
Yeah, that's helpful, I understand. I just, this isn't for you so much as, I think it's important that at some point in time, and that time maybe after the case is adjudicated, that there is some sort of review that happens, doesn't have to be public, people have privacy, but, you know, understanding that this person was a university student and there's been at least details in the arrest warrant that would be troubling to the university who's, who's trying to monitor folks who are having pretty significant mental breaks. And so I want to make sure that we are sure that everything was done that should have been done, both from law enforcement and from the university's perspective.
I will, if I can cut in here, just, Mr. Shaken, just to rest assured, long before this incident and since I have been-
Sergeant, can you weigh in on this carefully?
Yeah, I will. Long before this incident, just to give you a heads up on how, I work extremely, extremely closely with John Armstrong and Ellie Doherty from the University of Connecticut. And we work hand in hand communicating when it comes to students' behavior off-campus and their behavior on-campus. And if they have issues on-campus with a student and want to give me a heads up about something regarding their students' behavior off-campus and vice versa, there's an open flow of communication that goes back and forth. That is spoken of within meetings, I attend several meetings at UConn with their response team meetings that, you know, specific names are not brought up of that nature, but those type of scenarios, not that scenario, but information regarding off-campus activity of students and their responsibilities to the off-campus and the community are discussed on a very, very frequent basis, believe it or not.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
Does anybody else have a question? I have a question. There are, there are several models for this communication. There's the amber alert, the silver alert, and when we had a prison, there was also a great deal of talk about what kind of communication to the town there would be if somebody broke out of prison. So I'm wondering, have, I mean, I don't know how I get the amber alerts and the silver alerts, I don't think they come over our reverse 911, I don't know what the mechanism is, but, but I certainly get them. And there was certainly a mechanism in place during the time there was a prison in town. So it seems to me that there are mechanisms that exist for a situation where something is going wrong, even if you don't know exactly what it is, but to warn people.
Yes ma'am, that's correct. Your amber alerts and your silver alerts, because those are, especially the amber alerts, because those are relative or related to the non-custodial child abductions, that is something that, that goes out there wide and far. I don't even know if you have to sign up for those. There are a number of different systems within the state, you know, everyone is, you may be familiar with Everbridge, I don't know if the town has its own Everbridge system, but there's an Everbridge system out there, there's the reverse 911 piece, you can sign up for notifications through any number of state agencies for various information. So I think that's one of the things that we're doing is kind of cataloging what are those resources and how do we access them quickly in some way that we can give people the information they feel they need. I don't, like I said, I don't think anyone, no one intentionally tried to not notify anyone. I think in the course of their business, there were some assets that were either, they were unaware of or we overlooked in the flow of information there.
Mr. Sharon?
Just a question that comes to mind out of curiosity in terms of reverse 911. People on cell phones, all of the UConn students, how, are they included in a 911, reverse 911 system somehow or other?
Mr. Carrington?
Well, it's a good question, sir. Reverse 911 system is a- Oh, Mr. Carrington, were you going to answer that?
I was going to say with our system, which is called Code Red, you have to opt in, there are certain messages that go to everybody, but on most of them, they are an opt-in and I don't believe, students have to opt into ours. UConn has their own alert system, which I get, when there's a tornado warning, I got one a few months ago or a month ago.
Well, it seems to me that there are multiple systems, they overlap and they don't always connect and maybe it's, I think at least cataloging these, these assets makes a great deal of sense. From, from what I have been hearing-
If I could, I'd just like to-
Lieutenant Palmer, are you, are you trying to speak? I think you're freezing.
Yeah, I think so as well. I was just going to try to flesh out that, the rest of that answer just to, to give it a little bit more context. The Everbridge system does require a sign-up, whether it's at a town level or a state level. Reverse 911s traditionally go to landlines. So if you haven't signed up for Everbridge or you don't have a landline, you may not get those alerts. So that's something that we are trying to discern, again, the overlaying of systems and which ones we would have to use in order to get the word out the widest to the community is where, is what we're, is what we're working on.
Further questions from council members? Well, I really would like to thank you guys for coming and this is, this is one of those things where people really got frightened. But I'm, you know, I, as you have said, it was a very unusual incident and let's hope we don't have to put all these plans into, into, into effect in the near or even distant future that was, and let's hope that something like that doesn't happen again. But it's, my guess is that somewhere within the next five to 10 years, there will be something like this where people will need to know about crime being committed within the communities and to be alert. So, so thank you very much for spending time with us this evening and for your attention to our public safety. With that, I, unless somebody else-
You're welcome. If there's-
Go ahead.
I just want to say if there's any further questions, you can reach me through Sergeant Timmy or directly at the barracks at any point in time with regard to this. If there was something you want to follow up with, please feel free to reach out to me. We want to make sure that we, we satisfy everyone's concerns and questions to the best of our ability right now as we move forward.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to move on to the next item on our agenda. The next item is the communications specialist position. Mr. Carrington?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As council may recall, in the current year budget, the superintendent and I requested a full-time, shared, 50% each communications position to begin on July 1st with a salary of $45,430. The council did approve the position, but with an effective date of January 1st at half that, $22,700, but only after review of the current budget, given the effect of the pandemic. With recent activities, become abundantly apparent that both the town and Mansfield Board of Education need this position now, the pandemic, the recent tropical storm, you know, we need to have to our ability to get out effective and timely messages to residents and even the case we just talked about might even apply, didn't even consider that. Residents have been requesting a lot of information on school scheduling, UConn student returns, ever source in response to the recent storm. They've calmed down a little, but I almost get a daily call from the, at least the Chronicle. I know the mayor and deputy mayor have also have a lot of, increased media contact. So the current staffing of both my office and the superintendent's office is not adequate to respond to these and other requests, so- and the superintendent's office is not adequate to respond to these and other requests. So that's why we're requesting you approve this position for immediate hire.
Mr. Shaiken?
Sure. I will sort of leave space before I make a motion. If anyone has a substantive question for John on this. I just sort of, to put a, to put a point on what John was talking about, as, just to offer my observations as someone who is, as an individual counselor, push John and town staff to, you know, update the website more frequently, get on social media, and really respond to residents' concerns. This isn't any, this isn't a knock on any, any one of them whatsoever. This is, it's nobody's, like, job right now, right? This is something that a lot of staff people are dabbling in. John, Tasha, for a while, the library staff and the library was closed. And in a time when people are cut off, especially from, from their sort of traditional information networks, when people aren't going to the community center and gossiping in the morning or popping in town hall if that's where they go or whatever, I have just noticed a really substantial increase of a lot of town residents really looking for a lot of information. Not opinion, not, you know, fluff, not messaging, but what's going on? How can I learn about this? What's, what's the deal? And especially around schools reopening right now and just around sharing general public health information, I think it makes a lot of sense. And if we are able to find this additional cost for the additional quarter that this hire would come in during, I think it's a good idea. So I'll, I'm preparing to make the motion, but if anyone has questions for John about it first, I will wait.
Mr. Freudman, followed by Mr. Sharon?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate your holding back on motions. You know, I always liked for us to be able to discuss things, maybe ask staff some questions before motion is put on the table and debate is kind of limited then. You know, there are two parts to this. You know, one is the school and one is the town. But the school gets a lot of questions about school rescheduling. That's, that's their problem. The school has its own budget. We always approve it. And they could hire a half-time communications specialist for, for all I can say. They can hire two full-time ones. You know, they have lots of money. They can allocate it any way, any way they want. But, but the fact that people want information on school rescheduling is not a reason for us to hire a communications specialist for the, for the town side. That is a separate issue, and the school is free to do what it wants. Hire it, hire a part-time or full-time or whatever. As far as the town's needs, I'm a little, I'm a little surprised by a couple of things. First of all, and this is a longstanding problem I have, we never prioritize. Everybody wants something that's put in the budget, then you come back, you want something else, and then there's a third thing. Nobody says, well, let's weigh some things. Maybe you've got to do a little bit less of this and pay for that. Let me just mention that there was an item in our budget in the capital improvements program for $50,000 for, for positioning and marketing plans. Now, you, I'm not going to discuss that. It's not on our agenda, but you know what that is. It's brochures, some videos to put on the internet, nothing that critical. There could have been, you know, cut that out and then use that to pay for that. But that's never on for it. It's always, oh, that was great. This is great. Now we want to do something else. That's great. I'm also, just want to mention that, you know, Mr. Carrington, who's been doing for some time now a great job as interim town manager, you know, that is kind of coming to a close, I think. You know, it could very well be that within two months, we'll have a, a permanent town manager, and that person could decide come January whether he or she needs a communications specialist. I don't see, I don't see the exigency for this. The only thing that I could see that Mr. Carrington is mentioning is that he gets almost daily calls from the media. Well, you know, we all get calls from the media. If the reporter is putting together an article, and maybe he wants a quote from a town manager or a mayor or even a council member, you don't want to be referred to as spokesperson. I mean, they want a quote from, you know, the principal person, the one who runs the town, the town manager. That's kind of appropriate. I think that just comes, comes, comes with the territory. So again, I, I'm not, I'm not any more sympathetic to this than I was during budget season. And at the very least, I think the council should stick to the original schedule. Although I'm not in favor of hiring one in January either, but at least defer to that, like you originally said. I just don't see this critical need on the town side. So I'll, if a motion is made, I'll oppose it. And again, I thank deputy mayor and everybody else for giving a chance for us to discuss this and knock some ideas about, around or ask some questions before motions are quickly put on the table. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
Mr. Sharon, followed by Mrs. Bartholot?
I think Mr. Freudman made a number of good points, and the one that I particularly am concerned about is hiring somebody at this point prior to the new town manager coming onboard. Having worked in communications at various times, it's very important that this person have a close relationship with the town manager, the superintendent, the mayor, deputy mayor, and others, but a close enough relationship that he or she can just determine what the priorities, know when to interrupt a meeting, when information has to be gathered, and so forth. So that, that, that's a concern. And I, I will support this because I understand the particular nature of the times, but I do wish that we could have held off until, and maybe as it turns out, we will in terms of the timing of recruitment and so forth, till a new town manager's onboard.
Ms. Bartholot, followed by Mr. Kochenberger, followed by Mr. Shaiken.
Thank you. Just a couple of points and a question. Regarding the joint hire with the school, when I think about this, I think about how important young families are to our community and what, and how isolating it can be to be a young parent at home with kids, and how important it is that we are, we are working hand in hand with the schools to make sure that community members feel community. So this is more than just reaching out and saying, when is school gonna start? It's more, it's reaching out and making sure that families are doing okay. And, and that's a role that goes hand in hand with the school. We need to work together. So I think having this be a joint appointment is really important. Next, regarding the budget, it was fiscally sound. It was conservative. This was part of it. I again applaud our staff for giving us such an excellent budget and for, for making this a priority. I know that we, at the time, thought that we could hold back until January. It no longer makes sense to wait until January. People need information. We don't have a local newspaper. Our staff are taxed greatly by trying to stay in front of information. I myself was at the town hall recently, where a very, very upset member of the public was pounding on the door in great frustration, largely because he wasn't getting the information that he sought, not because the town was dropping the ball, but because we, we need to do a better job. And that's what, what we'll be doing here. And lastly, my only question is a bit of a concern that maybe $45,000 is not going to be enough for this position. That, and I'm just curious where that number came from. And I'm just thinking that we need to be hiring a professional, and that may not actually be enough money to, to get the best person.
Ms. Trahan, can you answer the question about where the salary estimate came from?
Not, not totally, because that typically comes out of the HR office in terms of rating those jobs and, and where they fit. But I know we were trying to keep the position more at a starting level. But what Ms. Bartholot mentions is exactly one of the things we were a little bit concerned about, was that we would get the level of experience that we were needed. But we were also very concerned about the budget. So I think that's where we were hoping to find someone at more of a lower-level position, more of an introductory position that we could then groom into a higher-level position. Because a true, real communications expert at a high level, doing exactly what Mr. Sharon was talking about, would go more. So I think we're gonna have to see what's out there in terms of the market. And if we can't bring someone in at that level, we may have to go back and, and request a position at a higher level.
Ms. Shaefer, do you have a comment about, about the salary level for this position? Well, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm getting feedback. And I am not sure how that salary was established.
Okay, we, we, we can't hear you, really. Well, Mr. Shaiken?
You had Peter first.
Kochenberger's first, yes. Mr. Sha, Mr. Kochenberger.
Thank you. I, I, as we talked about initially when this was approved, you know, for the budget, I very strongly support this, this hire. And, and for the reasons suggested, you know, reasons just discussed tonight as well, I would also simply add to that that, you know, it's not, some of it's a question of time, ability and experience in communicating with different groups of people. But it's also, I think, very important to know how to phrase the communication, how do you get it out best? How do you communicate differently on the website versus social media versus written information that's distributed in hard copy, all of which we do. And that is not something that, you know, it's something that experience and education and, you know, knowledge of working with different constituencies, I think is very important. So it's also, and it's not that we've been doing, we being the county done a bad job at all, but it's, we've also had to really pull things together, even when resources weren't, weren't so stressed as they are now. So I think it's a very important position to do. And if I was gonna give one example, it would be, for example, you know, we're talking about perhaps, you know, emphasizing the amount, you know, more on this whole state, sorry, the town's webpage about COVID-19 and the numerous fraud possibilities. That's something that, you know, if someone who's experienced with that would have, you know, would have a good sense of how best to express that to different communities, like senior citizens, other groups particularly affected. I do agree, I do understand David's concern and Ron amplified it. And I think the relationship between the town manager and the communications person is particularly, you know, should be particularly close. And I believe that in Connecticut, for example, Ben would probably know more. But I think the state of Connecticut a couple of years ago allows now the division, our communication directors of various state departments are not necessarily protected. They, they are, I think, considered more or less political appointees. I think that's an example of the need for that connection. So I, I think we should go ahead, and I'm gonna vote for this, but if, if, within the next couple of weeks, and we should know within the next couple of weeks, we think we're making real progress in terms of hiring a city, a town manager, then I think that final decision of who to hire the communications specialist and that person could still start, you know, come November, would, would be made by the new town manager. So I'm gonna vote for this. There's a possibility that timing wouldn't work out, but I hope it does because I agree with David and Ron that it is an important goal to try to achieve. Thank you.
Mr. Shaiken, followed by Mr. Freudman.
So I'm gonna make the motion. I hope that we, now that we've had a full debate before a motion is made, we don't have to, we don't have to completely rehash what we just debated once we're on the floor. I move effective today to authorize the interim town manager to recruit and fill the proposed communications specialist position that will be shared at 50% with the Interim Department of Education.
Is there a second, Ms. Bartholot?
A second.
So-
Okay.
Mr. Shaiken? Yeah, I just to add to what I said before, Toni mentioned during her report, you know, that I did some of the logistical work behind the press conference on Friday. And, you know, there's a lot of that logistical work that goes on, writing press releases, contacting media, handing out press packets when they get there, et cetera, et cetera. And, and I'm not saying that that's gonna be a regular occurrence here. That's a once in forever event. But I do think having this person who would have been able to professionally support, you know, the council wanting to do that, the town manager wanting to have this sort of affirmative press communication event would be a good thing. It would make it less political. It would make it less, it, it would make it more official, if that makes sense. You know, I was just sort of lending expertise as, on a volunteer basis, but not really speaking on behalf of the town in any capacity. So I think that would be helpful. But, but, but much, much, much more importantly than, as we talk about the press, I, I have just noticed as an individual resident of Mansfield who happens to be on the town council, that there is this incredible thirst for information about what's going on in town. That, that's largely COVID-related, I think, but it's also just generally. And this happened during a power outage. This just happens generally. And, and for those of you who are active on Facebook, who are part of the Mansfield sort of Facebook group with town residents, you know that this has sort of become in the last maybe six or eight months, a constant topic of conversation. Some of us on council, you know, weigh in and have conversations with people. But I think it would be really helpful to have someone in the town hall whose job it is to help communicate not just with press, but with people directly about what's going on that is relevant to them in the various town departments. What's public works up to? What roads are they paving? What's the fire department up to? What is the school system need to hear from parents? And so that's a half of it. And I think the other half is, I'm a big believer in trying to solicit and get public feedback on decisions and on things that are happening. It's how you get buy-in on projects. It's how you, you get people to, you know, to feel good about what's going on in the community that is good. And so to have someone who's focused on trying to continually frame the lens that town staff are looking at planning for things as to how can we involve the public? How can we get this information out to people? I think it'll have a lot of value. And I don't mean that to be disparaging in any way to how things work right now, but I really think that having a person who, you know, sitting in meetings, having that as their, you know, as their focus will, will end up having great value to the community's engagement and involvement with what happens in, in town hall and at the Board of Ed. So lastly and finally, from a budget perspective, you know, yes, we did delay this hire until January in this budget, but as, as the finance committee learned last, last week at our last meeting, that, that Ms. Trahan is preliminarily projecting a very significant budget surplus for the last fiscal year. And so the, the one quarter of increased cost, essentially $12,000, is something that I think we are able to manage right now. And then actually, really lastly, sorry, to respond to what Councilor Sharon and Councilor Freudman and Councilor Kochenberger brought up around the new town manager, if everything goes according to plan, I think that we will be sort of in the hiring process for this position as a new town manager is chosen and is beginning their job and hopefully. And so, you know, ideally, that person will be engaged in that decision. But I think it makes sense to get this position posted and get the process moving so that, so that we can get it, we can get it going so that this person's ready to, ready to roll when, when a new town manager starts. And then if everything blows up in our recruitment process, we do still need this position. And I think it makes sense to bring them on as we, as we continue, hopefully not, but if we continue to subject John to more months as the interim. So, so that's why I think you should all support it. I hope you will. Thank you.
Mr. Freudman, followed by Mr. Sharon?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to mention a few things, not to repeat previous arguments I made against this before the motion was put on the table. First of all, as far as the COVID updates, COVID won't last forever. But secondly, I don't see why that's such a big deal. I mean, we get these daily things from the governor. What's broken down by county, broken down by town? What are you doing? I was, I'm assuming, and I hope, I hope that's just being posted on the town website somewhere. And if it's not, maybe it should be, or certainly could be just relayed. We couldn't, we wouldn't have any more information, more current than what daily comes out of Governor Lamont's office. So that argument that there are questions about COVID leaves, leaves me cold. Somebody said, mentioned the date. You know, the, the, the manager wants to fill this on October 1st. That could be literally a fortnight before, before replacement comes in for the interim town manager. You know, I think, you know, October is very, very doable. Again, I would leave that for, for a new manager to decide if it absolutely is needed. And again, as far as the cost goes, somebody, I don't remember who, it might have been Councilor Bartholot, maybe Ms. Trahan, that, you know, can you get somebody for the $34,000 that's mentioned in the financial impact? Well, I noticed-
Well, I noticed that in the, uh, motion that was just put on, there's no mention of, of a dollar amount. The financial, uh, amount, that's kind of a wishful thing, you know, it may, may cost us far a little. Well, as somebody mentioned, maybe to get the quality person you, you will want, it may cost more, but the motion is written in such a way as there's no limit on how much could be spent. I noticed that was carefully, a dollar amount was carefully left out in the motion. Um, I won't repeat the arguments I have against it, I just don't think this is that important and a need. I think it's part of any public official's role, especially in just such a small town, um, to, you know, to answer a question once, once a day, if that much that comes in from the local paper, I don't think that's asking too much. These kinds of reporters aren't necessarily looking for some spokesperson to answer the question, they want it from, from, um, someone in a higher position. Uh, all right, that's it, I'll, I'll be voting no on this motion.
Uh, Mr. Shern?
Yeah, I, I want to propose an amendment, uh, to read, uh, to authorize the interim town manager to work in concert with the superintendent of schools to recruit and fill the proposed communications specialist. As it reads now, we could hire somebody in essentially for a half-time position that that's split evenly, impose such a person on the superintendent, I don't think that's our intention.
Mr. Carrington.
Toni, you need a second before Mr. Carrington can speak.
Um.
I just wanted to explain.
All right, is there a second?
You need a second first, proceed earlier, it's not on the table.
I know, I know. Is there a second to Mr. Shern's motion to amend? Mr. Kochenberger? Mr. Kochenberger seconds. Okay, Mr. Carrington.
I've been doing this for 404 days, not that I'm counting, if I tell you it's going to be $34,000, and I'm going to hire a position with the Board of Ed, of course, the Board of Ed's going to be sitting at the interview table. I mean, if you want to change the motion for that, to put the $34,000 in and to have the Board of Ed included, go ahead, but it is insulting to me.
Um, uh, uh, Mr. Shaken?
I don't know if Mr. Shern wants to speak to his amendment before I.
It's a matter of form, I assume that there would be a cooperative arrangement in the appointment, it just seemed to me that when you have a joint position, the leaders of the two institutions, um, be engaged and, uh, it would make some sense.
I, I appreciate that, I just, we're, we're going to have, to use Board of Ed, they put it in the motion, if I only have $34,000, I'm only going to spend $34,000 if it has to go higher, I'll come back to the council before I make a hire.
Well, I wasn't thinking about the money part, but I was thinking about the person.
Both of them.
Uh, I think we also have other positions where the person is employed by the town, works collaboratively with other agencies. Mr. Shaken?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, that's what I was just going to say, I think that we, we have a number of positions that are shared with the Board, Boards of Education and the departments. I think this language is pretty standard, and we create a position and I have the expectation that the board will be involved in the hiring as they are with every shared position, I don't think it's necessary to include the language, ultimately, the decision is one for the town manager to make because this employee will be, the employer of record will be the town, and so the boards will be involved in the interview process and recommendation process the same way they are with every shared position, the same way they were with the finance director, with, name it, so, um, I don't think the language is necessary, and I think John understands what he needs to do, and I don't think we need to have the option.
Ms. Bertholot?
Simply to reiterate that point, that, uh, this is a, a general, go ahead and get this done, but it's a given that Mr. Carrington has the knowledge and the expertise, uh, to, to take all the necessary steps to ensure, uh, that it's done appropriately, including, uh, speaking, uh, involving, uh, uh, the board, uh, in the hiring, but all the, all the little things like where it gets posted and how it gets posted, we don't have to write all of that in, just like we don't have to write that particular point in, uh, would be my point.
Mr. Freudman, speaking to the amendment?
Yes, I, although I oppose the main motion, I'll, I'll support this amendment if Mr. Shern thinks it's that important to ensure that, that the manager will hire, um, of course, in concert with the Board of Ed, um, I, I'm sure he would be doing that anyway, I, I know he would, just like with the, the finance director, the interviewing was done with by him and Ms. Trahan and the superintendent, so I agree with, uh, ma- manager's point that, you know, he, he's going to, he, he always does that anyway when there's a joint position, but if Mr. Shern feels it's, um, that important to have as an amendment, I will support it, but I will still oppose the main motion.
Um, is anybody else wish to speak to Mr. Shern's amendment? Uh, I am going to vote against the amendment because I think this employee should be employed by the town, uh, um, if the, it is a shared service, then we can work that out separately, but I think this ought to be a town employee. Um, so, um, so we'll call for a roll call vote on Mr. Shern's amendment. Ms. Chain?
Yes, Bertholot?
No.
Bruder?
No.
For Tony?
Yeah, yes.
Freudman?
Yes.
Kochenberger?
Yes.
Moran?
No.
Shern?
Yes.
Shaken?
No.
Mayor, that's four against and four in favor.
So when you have a tie vote, the motion fails. Um, Mr. Shaken?
Just for the second time on the main motion, Councilor Freudman, um, brought up an interesting question regarding the COVID information on the town's website, whether the governor's stats are being posted. Um, perhaps mistakenly, I think he illuminated the, one of the main drivers for my support for this motion now, and that is the fact that if you go to the town's website, the COVID section, at least as of a couple of days ago, hadn't been updated since mid-July. Um, and so the, the reality is it's nobody's job in town hall explicitly to keep on top of the affirmative communication with the public, and, um, it's been frustrating as a counselor, and again, not to speak ill on any of the, on all of the hard work that town staff have been doing throughout this crisis, they have certainly been doing a lot more important things than checking social media and checking the website, um, but that, that there isn't someone whose job it is to do that. Even just earlier this week, as UConn sent us, uh, this response to the thought exchange that was in the town manager's report and the survey results, et cetera, um, I sent John an email that said, this is great, when can this get up on the website, we need to get this up on the website? And John said, I don't know, it's going to be a few days, we, you know, we gotta, someone's got to find time to figure out how to put it up on the website. So, again, that's the exact reason this person is needed, when something like this comes along, the community needs to see, there needs to be somebody who John just forwards and says, throw this up on the website, and in five minutes they say, cool, it's up on the website. That's the level of communication in this day and age, COVID and social media and whatever that the public expects from their government, and so we need to make sure that that's happening. Thank you.
Uh, one of the things that, that has been happening during this period is that the various departments have been keeping, uh, have been publishing their own materials, and, um, there's not necessarily a coherence or even a cross-checking of things, so, uh, if you read the, um, Parks and Rec website, you get one set of information, you read the library website, you get another, you read the schools' websites, you get another, uh, there aren't any necessary links between them, and one of the things that, from the very beginning of this, that, that I was very much in favor of is we need to put out information, 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 we need even links to, um, to provide information about what UConn is doing because we continually be asked, are asked that, and, uh, somebody needs to say, if you want to know what UConn's doing, here's how you find out. Anyway, are we ready to vote on this motion? Ms. Chain, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Bertholot?
Yes.
Bruder?
Yeah.
For Tony?
No.
Freudman?
No.
Kochenberger?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Shern?
Yes.
Shaken?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion has been adopted. All right, the next item on our agenda is, uh, the health insurance fund reserve policy. Uh, Mr. Kochenberger, I believe this has come out of your committee?
That is correct, Mayor, um, and this is similar to the earlier policy we proposed, um, we have, oh, I'm sorry, this is the earlier policy we had approved, what we have is, uh, a request, and we can, uh, for a few minor, I think, and I agree, they were minor changes, and that is essentially if we go to page, pages 42 out of 115 and pages 43 out of 115, uh, since there are several partners to the health fund, uh, the health insurance fund, uh, then the section seven originally had language that said the town manager will recommend to the town council, um, if there are, if they have recommendations to use money, this money, or use of the fund for any non-health insurance-related is use. That's an important provision, the reason why the, the request, which the finance committee used, we voted on to grant that is, um, because it refers only to Mansfield, and in fact, presumably the Board of, uh, Region 19's board would have authority as one of the partners over there, the use of, uh, their portion of the fund for non-health purposes, and the same for the Board of Education. So this, uh, section seven just strikes that out, which is limited, and then although it's in bold rather than red line, if we look at section 8B, uh, we pick this up, when there's a surplus, um, it can be used, and this is not a new, uh, the use of a surplus for non-health provisions was, is not new, we debated that and approved that several times, but non-health related uses with approval by both of the respective partners governing body. So again, it's, it's moving the requirement that if a partner wants, if there's a recommendation to use a portion of this fund for non-health purposes, that that, um, that entity's governing body has to be the entity to approve it. For us, the town, that would be us, the town council. Uh, so I, uh, that, and then the third change, which is under annual review, uh, just provides a minimum 30-day requirement.
Um, since this came from finance, it doesn't require a second discussion, Mr. Shern?
Just curious, is that last point, is it negotiable in contract negotiations? My, my reasoning is that these funds are, because of an excess of funds, either contributed by the employee or by the partner on behalf of the employee, and I wonder if there's, uh, although I assume we have a full legal right to do this, whether there's something that could be negotiated, that could be subject to negotiation.
I, I don't know the answer to that, and I think we do have a legal right to, to do this because much of these funds are, in fact, put in by the partner. Uh, whether that right can be negotiated away, I don't know. I don't think, I believe it hasn't been, uh, but I don't know whether that is legally possible.
I don't believe that the management of the fund itself is a mandatory subject of collective bargaining, I'm not even sure it's a permissible subject. Ms. Trahan?
Right, um, you know, there, the, the, the contracts do, um, include that will provide coverage and, but that the town sets the premium rates, um, whether they could negotiate that, but we have discussed this with all the unions, they have seen this policy. Um, I know we had a number of questions on regional school District 19 from, from their, um, one of their unions, um, and they understood that the main purpose of this, and particularly the first option of using, um, the funds, the way we laid this out, was to maintain premiums and create stability for everyone. So I don't see that this is an issue. Um, we, we also discussed the fact that the town contributes significantly more to the health insurance than the employees do. So if there is a distribution of surplus, um, the employee, employer would certainly take, uh, the majority of that, but there's nothing in the contracts that say that an employee should share in any sort of the surplus, um, and I wouldn't expect that, I mean, that would be something I knew, we try to reassure them that we're doing it appropriately, um, and that the first step we take is to reduce the premiums for both the employer and the employee, so it, we're treating them very fairly.
If they've been reassured and they're content with it, then that takes care of my concern.
Okay.
Any further, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Tran.
I said, and they watch us.
Uh, any other comments on this policy proposal? All right, I think we are ready to vote. Ms. Chain, would you call the roll?
Yes, Bertholot? Bruder?
Yeah.
For Tony?
Yes.
Freudman?
Yes.
Kochenberger?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Shern?
Yes.
Shaken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it's adopted unanimously. The next two items are sewer budgets, and we need a motion to become the, uh, Water Pollution Control Authority. Is there a motion? Ms. Bertholot moves to move in.
August 24th, oh, I'm sorry, move that the council recess as the town council and convene as the Mansfield Water Pollution Control Authority.
Is there a second? Mr. Bruder seconds. Is there anybody who is opposed? Okay, this is adopted unanimously. Um, Mr. Carrington, would you, uh, explain?
Do you want to go first, Mayor, or, or wait?
Um, did this come through your committee, Mr. Kochenberger?
No, this is, this is, uh, no, it did not.
Ms. Tran?
Yes, um, we simply ran out of time trying to get this completed before my departure, um, and though the Willamette Sewer Budget, this proposal is the exact same proposal that you saw during the budget process, so everyone has seen this before, um, but we are running late to get these, um, how, um, these budgets adopted for fiscal year 2021, so rather than have to wait for another finance committee meeting, we decided to, um, just bring it right to the council as a whole.
Okay, um, Mr. Kochenberger, would I, will you make the motion?
Sure, um, I'm sorry, this wasn't for a sec, um, I move effective August 21st, 24th, 2020, to adopt the fiscal year 2020, 2021 Willamette Sewer Budget as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Bertholot seconds. Uh, discussion?
I think the memo is very good and self-explanatory, but if, um, either John or Shern have additional comments or if people have questions.
I don't see any. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. The motion carries unanimously. There is another motion on, um, um, page 51. Um, Mr. Kochenberger?
Yes, uh, we're already in, uh, we are already acting as a water pollution control authority, so I move effective August 24th, 2020, to adopt the fiscal year 2020, 2021 UConn Sewer Budget as prepared by town staff.
Is there a second? Ms. Bertholot seconds. Ms. Tran, do you, would you just present this?
Yes, I'd like to.
This is a little different, I guess.
Yes, yeah, there's a little more involvement here, so I'd just like to give a little overview, and we have Derek Delai on the line now as well, who can answer some of the more typical, uh, technical questions that I can't answer, so, um, we are proposing a slight increase in the rates, um, we, we looked at this pretty hard, and that's one of the reasons that we were holding off doing this budget, and doing this budget, and that you didn't see it back in April or so when we were adopting the budget. Some of the charges from Yukon were significantly higher than what we had anticipated. So we've been kind of watching that. They have come down. They are still indicating a potential increase of, I believe Derek's original estimate was about a ten percent increase. We're sort of trying to build in a little at a time, because we don't want to hit folks with too much at one time. So this recommends a five percent increase, which would bring the rate from five dollars and seventy-five cents per CCF to six oh four per CCF. We're still going to show an operating deficit of three hundred and thirty thousand. But recall, we are now paying a portion of the debt for the Four Corners Sewer Project out of this fund. So once those assessments begin to take place, that, those will reimburse the fund. So it's going to be critical that once the project is complete and we start getting folks hooked up, we need to really figure out WPCA has to take on what the assessments are going to be. Derek, do you want to add anything on why the costs are going up?
Yeah, I would say that Yukon is doing a better job maintaining their system now, so they are actually spending some money on their collection system like most municipalities are doing. So I think that's what we're kind of seeing, is them actually taking care of the system that is over a hundred years old. We've actually been able to cut some of our costs operationally. Went back out to bid for pump station maintenance. Were able to save some dollars there and some other dollars we were able to save through some operations, so.
Mr. Freudman?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Again, this is one of those cases where I would appreciate it if we have a chance to ask questions of staff before a motion is put on the table, but it was put on immediately, so I'll ask them now. First of all, I am quite concerned that the retained earnings went down three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, or what's called the operating deficit in the paragraph on page fifty-one on the operating deficit. That's a big hit, but it's understandable. I mean, we have that sewer agreement with Yukon. I always felt that was going to be problematic, but we can't, that's been done. But I do have a question about the Four Corners Project itself, the sewer project. I noticed in the very middle, the financial impact paragraph on page fifty-one, starting at the end of page fifty, end of the third line, it says it's expected that these funds will be replenished over time, once the Four Corners Project is complete and the assessments are established. Very well. I'm a little bit surprised, though. When I saw that Route Forty-four was resurfaced, I, you know, it looks nice now, I thought that meant the project was completed. The sewer lines are in, the road will resurface. How come it's, how come it's not, how come the project is not considered complete yet?
Let's get an answer. Let's get an answer. Mr. Delai?
Certainly. So you're absolutely correct. The road was resurfaced in that area. We're getting the last of the pay estimates. This way, it's fully complete from the accounting perspective. We still have two payments to still make out to the contractor regarding retainage. And we have a little resurfacing to do in Jensen's that was in lieu of a pretty good size payment for receiving the easement. So we accept a little bit of resurfacing to do in Jensen's, so that was actually a better deal. So that's really the reason why we're, need those last two numbers in order to create those assessments. So I expect that to happen the next month or two.
And then you'll start sending out, doing the assessments. Again, I think that could have been done already, because even if you can't charge it till you're completely done, it seems to me the assessments could have been completed, because that's a known factor, just based on the linear feet of the sewer line in front of each potential hookup, potential customer's property. How come, how come we haven't even done that work of making the assessments, of calculating the assessments in preparation for the project being completed, as you say, in a month or so?
Yep, you're absolutely right. Those are completed, all the assessments. We just need a final project value to be able to allocate between the taxpayers and those users that will be receiving assessments.
I have one more question. I'm sure that Jensen's will hook up. I realize that's considered one customer, because, you know, kind of like an apartment complex, I guess. Although I realize those are not, it's not an apartment complex. Do you have any estimate on how many of the people along the route will actually hook up, other than Jensen's?
There's already four users that have connected besides Jensen's, and we are anticipating additional ones as well. Some of the existing businesses have already drafted plans and submitted engineering documents that we're currently reviewing to be, to make connections.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Delai, but fall ahead. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions regarding this motion? Mr. Bruder?
Just real quick, in regards to the maintenance that's now being done that wasn't being done, is there any explanation as to what made that change with Yukon?
Well, I think it's a recognition that these pipes can't just be installed and forgotten. They're completing their yearly maintenance now that should, which always should have been completed. In addition, they're also really going after greases and things that shouldn't be in the sewer lines, and that's good for all users. Helps cut down those operational costs. So these are all good things that, you know, we do in various parts of the community as well, so.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Berthelot?
Sorry, that wasn't to raise my hand.
Oh, okay. Are we ready to vote? Is there anybody who is going to vote against this motion? Anybody who's going to abstain? Then the motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, oh, yes, is there a motion to reconvene as the town council, please? Moved by Mr. Kochenberger, seconded by Mr. Bruder. We are, all those in favor of reconvening, please raise your hand. Okay, we are reconvened as the town council unanimously. Reports of council committees. Mr. Kochenberger, finance?
Sorry, we've gone over most of the main issues. The one issue that we talked about, it followed up on, is whether to recommend an increase in liability insurance in our umbrella from ten to fifteen million dollars. I would, we discussed it, and there was not, well, Ben and I, Al was not able to attend, I don't believe. So, and, but, I apologize. Actually, I think Al was there at the end. I don't think there's a strong recommendation to do so. However, I would like to report back on this issue. I wanted to have a chance. I haven't had a chance to talk to Kermer, our risk, you know, our insurance company, in terms of what they recommend. And also, curious about a couple other towns. I think this, I am concerned, because the amount of insurance we have for a town our size is not going to determine how much we get sued for. We can be liable for fifteen million dollars if we're liable for it. So having insurance to cover that, I think, might be important. So I'd like to have a little more time to investigate this more fully. I will say, though, that there was not, I think my position is in the minority, but I do want to, in the finance committee, but I do want to, if I could, have a little more time to talk to some people.
Okay, is there anything else from finance?
Yes.
Mr. Freudman?
Yeah, I'm just reporting from the finance committee, and of course, councillor.
Mr. Freudman, are you a member of the finance committee?
Yes, we all are.
No, but you're not, no, you're there as ex officio, but you're not a regular member of the committee?
No, I'm a regular, I'm an ex officio member.
Right, so you can comment on Mr. Kochenberger's report, but you don't make an independent report? Do you wish to comment on Mr. Kochenberger's report?
Actually, I do, but this is, this is a new rule you're just making on the fly. There have been plenty of times when we've made minority reports. We're all considered members.
Only if you're a member of the committee that is, that you are commenting on. You can't make a minority report for a committee that you are not a member of.
I don't believe that's correct. I can't vote or make motions. It doesn't mean, but all the other rights of a member attach. I think you're, I think the mayor is mistaken. And I'd like to see some proof of what you're saying. You know, we are equal members.
Go ahead, make your comments. Make your comments.
No, this is important. We are all equal members of all the standing committees.
No, we are not. We are either a member.
We cannot make motions. All right, on the, on the, on the insurance, you know, there had been some, there had been a question about whether we should increase our liability insurance. Everything councillor Kochenberger said is true. I just think it should be added also that the consultant that we had that spoke to the committee felt that the liability coverage we have now seems to be sufficient, you know, typical, I think he said, for a town with our profile, our demographic, our size, our profile. So I'm a little, you know, I don't know what's going to come up with the next budget season, but it kind of left it in limbo. I never could figure out whether you were telling, giving a signal to the, to the management and to the finance director, whether you want estimates put together for the coming budget season, which will be here soon, for 2022, or not. And I'm afraid the way it was left open is they're going to come back and probably add additional liability insurance and that, and present it to us as part of the proposed budget. I just don't know.
Then you can vote against it if that happens, Mr. Freud, Mr. Shaken.
We don't know, I don't know if that's going to happen. That's my point.
Well, Mr. Kochenberger is not making a recommendation. There is no recommendation. If something sneaks into the budget, you can spot it and vote against it. It's nine thirty, almost nine thirty, Mr. Freudman. I would very much like to bring this meeting to a close. Mr. Shaken?
The council will be surprised to know that the finance committee had a nearly identical conversation at our last meeting. I wanted to just remind Mr. Kochenberger of something, see if he wanted to update the council about the direction that the committee gave staff regarding a business interruption claim, even though it looks like we have maybe lost him. He's here.
Oh, sorry, I was put on mute. Yes. So just to finish up on, I did have, well, I did have a different recollection of what our town broker said on the visability, but I agree, we should hold that discussion for later. In terms of the business interruption, we, I think the decision was made to present a claim, which is a fairly non-burned some requirement, to present a claim to the state's, I'm sorry, the town's property insurer, which would be Kermer, same for property and liability, with a business interruption loss based on the COVID-19 closers of, largely the community center, but it could be, I think Mr. Carrington said there were a couple other town functions that also lost revenue because of the closing. Their issues are sort of very much based on the literal word by word of the insurance policy. There are probably over a thousand cases in the country right now on this. Very few have been decided, not surprisingly. And regardless, even if we, you know, we are also limited, at least on one argument, to a maximum of two weeks, I think, of what the coverage would be, but that would certainly be still a decent amount of money. And the process of filing a claim with the insurer does not mean sending out a very detailed explanation of the loss. It's, that's what the insurer can ask us. It's more or less putting them on notice that we have a claim, why we have a claim, and the approximate amount, perhaps. And so that was, that is, that was, I think, a really recommendation. And thank you, Mr. Shaken, for reminding me of that.
I have a point of order.
Mr. Freudman?
Yes, my point of order is this. I'd like a real ruling on ex officio members of a standing committee speaking, because I'm not the only one, but I also want to point out that people like manager Carrington or whoever the town manager is, or the finance director, they routinely, and properly so, step in and speak during committee reports, you know, to give their impressions and fill in the blanks and et cetera, just do all the things you do. You never said to them, nor should you, Mr. Carrington, you can't speak now to clarify anything or give your position on something on, during a committee report, because you're only ex officio. So my point of order is, I'd like a ruling on this. If you're going to apply it to council members that aren't voting members of a committee, how can you ever let the finance director say or a manager speak? They're also ex officio.
No, they are not ex officio. They are staff of the committee. That's a different, that's a different status. Mr. Shaken?
They are ex officio.
I'd like to argue a point of distinction here that perhaps might satisfy Mr. Freudman's point of order or inform your ruling as a chair, which is that certainly this item on the agenda of our meeting, our regular meeting, is for committees to give their reports, and councillors are free to discuss those reports. But in fact, the duty of delivering a report is left to the chair of that committee. Now, in the past, the council has graciously obliged Mr. Freudman's frequent request to deliver minority reports from said committees, but only when he's been a member of those committees, and his request tonight was in fact to deliver a minority report for a committee of which he is not a member.
That was my point, yes. So, Mr. Freudman, I am going to overrule your point of order. I think the members of the council understand the distinction that I made, and, period. Now, the next committee is personnel. Ms. Berthelot, have you, has the personnel committee met?
We have not.
Committee on Committees, Mr. Bruder?
We are meeting next month.
Okay. You do have a vacancy that you've been looking for somebody for. You want to tell us about that?
Yeah, we're looking for anyone that is a Connecticut Water customer, and lives in Mansfield, obviously, to be our town representative on the board. I think this is a really important volunteer opportunity, but, you know, we've asked around and we haven't gotten any takers yet. So you, any other council members, or any of the public listening, please find our volunteer application on our town website, and the town clerk will be able to schedule you for an interview. And I promise it's not very difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Bruder. Okay, the next item is departmental advisory committee reports. Any comments on those? Then petitions, requests, and communications. There is a request from Mr. Freudman regarding SROs. I would like to comment that what we have heard from Region Nineteen is that they are not discussing that program yet. They are continuing to respond to the public hearing, and we will be hearing from them regarding this issue. There is nothing in the works at the moment. Ms. Berthelot?
On that point, given that the contract has expired, it seems like we need to put it on a future agenda. I'm jumping into the future agenda, but echoing Councilman Freudman's concerns, we can't, just reading, it seems like we don't want this to get slow-walked until it just disappears. It seems like we need, we need something from the school board in response to what they've heard from Black Lives Matter, E.D.O. Smith, and what their general direction is, given particularly since the contract is now expired.
My assumption is that when they have something to bring to us, we will get it. I mean, I don't want to push them onto something. I think that their deliberative process is reasonable, and we need to respect it. Ms. Berthelot? Oh, we just lost you. We just lost you for a second.
I would just say they should, at least, I would say, ask that they come and they say what their deliberative process is going to be, so that we have some, some idea of. of that there is, they are moving forward and what they're moving forward looks like and what that timeline might be.
Um, Mr. Freudman followed by Mr. Shaken?
Following what I read in the newspaper, that, um, the article was, um, passed around, and I, I hope it appears as a communication to the council because it was sent to the town council. I noticed that there was, I learned that there was an article in the paper that strongly suggested that the, um, Eo Smith Board may, maybe, may possibly be rethinking the whole idea and now want to, um, do the SRO contract. Of course, you know, I'm opposed to it, so that's, that's fine with, with me. But apparently there's been quite a community, uh, input to the board saying they don't want it. Uh, the only point of my submission to the council, I, I had not known about that article when I sent my le- my letter to Mr. Carrington from back in June, when I sent it in. I might not have sent it if I had known that this whole idea is possibly limbo, but actually it maybe is good that I sent it in because all, all it's trying to do is saying, if we're going to have an agreement, and I'm not for any agreement on this, or else I'll always vote against it, but if we are have one, I pointed out some things that we should have in that agreement, um, that, that protects the town and Mansfield's interest so we don't get stuck with bills that, uh, should be shared by the three sending towns. That's all I had. I'm not in favor of the program. I hope we never hear from the high school and that they'll just, they'll let us die in the vine.
Mr. Shaken?
Can I just frame, sort of testing the bounds of germaneness here, but can I frame two questions to Mr. Carrington that are related to this? The first one is, um, is it your understanding, Mr. Carrington, that if the council does not approve a contract, that is to say, if the region doesn't come to us with this new contract, that the existing SROs will not be hired? They're not employed now. They were, they're part-time employees, so they haven't been on the payroll all summer, correct? So if, if, if we don't get something to approve, the program is not moving, or until we approve something, there is no school resource officer. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay.
So then, then, then I, I think I agree with the mayor that, that the region is a legislative body and has its own authority to make programmatic decisions for the high school. And if councillors wish to influence those decisions, they ought to speak to the region's board. Our role would be to approve or deny a contract that they bring forward for us to make, to be the administrative body that hires anyone if they decided to do that, as they did last year. And so if they are making a decision, they need to make that decision and come to us and then we will make a decision. But I don't think it's wise or proper for us to call them before us to explain to us how they're deciding to govern their own body.
Ms. Berthold followed by Mr. Bruder? And I do want to alert you to the time. It's 9:35 now.
I, I agree entirely. Uh, if that is correct, that there will be no SROs, um, as of September 8th, then there's no reason to come before us. But if they're, judging by the article in the paper, it sounds like they're, that they haven't made that decision. Um, so, which is putting us sort of in a crisis position. Uh, as of September 8th, there won't be a contract and will, but they may expect that there will be a contract. Uh, so that's my worry, uh, that we're putting.
That's not my, that's not my understanding.
So, so they're not coming in front of us, there's no contract?
Right.
We don't do anything, the contract is done.
There is no contract as of June 31st, period.
And we don't meet again until September 14th?
Mr. Bruder?
No, that, I think clarified, uh, what my question was, which was, um, they, they can't use last year's contract in the meantime until, okay, then.
No, it expired. It was a memorandum of agreement that had a termination date. Mr. Kochen-
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess I'd just point out, I mean, there is, there might be a real timing issue, but the issue, you know, that, without trying to play him to any blame, that would fall on Region 19. I mean, we don't, we're not obligated to rush and do an emergency hearing if we don't want to, uh, because they do or do not want, you know, they want to decide to continue the program. That's, you know, their responsibility is to come to us on a base, timely basis and we then, you know, do what we need to do, uh, that we can certainly accommodate urgent requests, but the crisis that would be would be there is not. They have to dictate the time.
Ms. Berthold?
There are going to be an awful lot of unhappy, potentially unhappy people though if, um, it, it looks as if we're not even going to consider it. Um, and those folks who really wanted it, um, all of a sudden it disappears and they're, and we're not voting for it. That's my worry. Uh, so.
They have to take that to Region 19. That is not our, our job.
We don't have anything to vote on, do we?
No. Or want the SROs, they gotta go to Region 19. They can't come to us. We don't initiate this thing.
We're going to look bad now.
Mr. Sharon?
Uh, yeah, the concern, as I understand it, is that if Region 19 moves ahead with it, but if there is no support on this council to support that, then there's a problem. And I don't know the mechanism. There's probably no formal mechanism, but it probably would be useful for Region 19 to have any form of discussion to get a sense of whether, if they do approve it, it will then get directly to the approval by the council.
I would think that when they know what they're doing at any level, and my understanding is that they don't know what they're doing yet. They have not completed their own deliberations. When they, when they have a sense of where they're going, we'll know about it. Mr. Kochenberger?
Thanks. No, I, I agree with that. I also just point out that our decision is whether they have, um, you know, whether they're entitled to have, um, you know, police armed guards or, or a lot, including the ones they have. We simply decide as, are we going to be the employer, which would provide them with arrest powers? Region 19 can continue to employ, you know, school security officers if they want. They would not have arrest authority and those police, those security guards could be armed if they comply with state law, which requires essentially that they either be police or former police and undergo training.
Mr. Shaken?
I just want to reiterate, in the same way that councillors felt perhaps like the board was assuming council support because they had asked for something and that, and taking away the agency perhaps of councillors in their, in their ability to make decisions on who the town employs and who they don't. The board would also feel the same way about the council interjecting our opinions about the nature and, uh, duration and expediency of their own deliberative process. And in fact, I think, at, at times when we have had them before us to discuss this issue, the chairman has expressed some significant hurt feelings about the council's interjection into their deliberate process. I just, especially in a regional board where Mansfield is not the only voice at the table, um, I, I think we need to be respectful of their independent authority as a legislative body to make decisions about the goings on at Eo Smith High School and stay in the lane that the council has, which is whether or not the council wishes to have the town employ school resource officers because of the nuance in state law. So I, I'm frankly very pleased that the board appears to be taking everything that they've heard over the summer very seriously and being very deliberative. I, I did not read that article in, in a way that made me think that we were going to receive a request later this week for an emergency meeting before September 8th. I mean, I, it doesn't, no one has gotten any indication that, that that's happening. So I appreciate wanting to be on top of things, but I think we need to let the region receive the feedback the region received and hear from them when it's time for them to come to us if they indeed decide they want to.
Ms. Berthold?
Um, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on the matter. Um, I do agree that we certainly want the, uh, school board to deliberate on the issue. I am not as comfortable in the, in, in believing that they, they underst- they also think that the contract has ended. I, I, lots of times in government contracts, they continue to go without anybody exercising, uh, anything. And I'm just worried that they believe that, um, us doing nothing means that the contract continues. And that's my.
I don't believe they do. No, they don't. No, they don't. In all of my conversations with the new superintendent, with, uh, with the chairman of the board, there is no assumption that, that this will resume until they figure out what they're going to do and bring it back to us. Okay, the one other thing on the, uh, petitions, requests and communications is that UConn has, has, uh, declared a stage one voluntary water conservation. Certainly the townspeople are very much aware of the existing drought as well. And so I would urge people to be, uh, to voluntarily, uh, limit their own use of water in town, if anybody is still listening to us for this quarter of 10. Now, items on future agendas? Mr. Shaken?
Thanks. Um, I, I just wanted to make a request. I know I've made this in private, but to put it publicly, that we, uh, we use whatever powers of political influence and will we have to, um, to get someone from the university to join us at, at a standing agenda item to discuss the COVID situation on campus, at least for the next month or two. It doesn't have to take an hour every, every week, but, um, it's something that's on the minds of a lot of people in town. And I think we, we owe it to them to, to provide a public forum for that conversation with the university to happen, um, especially as, as the university deals with, um, a relatively low number of infections that were caused by contact with someone as people moved into campus. It's still a really, really low rate, but it is campus spread, a limited spread that was hopefully caught in its entirety. I just think it's important that at least say we go through the semester for the month of September, at least someone shows up and says, here's what's going on, here's, and takes questions that, that the council has and that we can solicit from the community.
I have already requested that and, um, we're waiting for a final confirmation. Uh, I've asked for it for, uh, each council meeting, um, because since we only meet every two weeks, I think this is, moves too fast. Um, but we have made that request and I will be following up on it. Okay, I think the last item on our agenda is a motion. Does somebody want to move that we adjourn? Mr. Bruder and seconded by Mr. Kochenberger? Thank you. Is there any opposition to adjourning? Thank you. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.